We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor Jason Hoffman of the Crossroads Apostolic Church. Pastor?
Lord God, we thank you tonight for this opportunity. We praise you for your work in our lives. Thank you for your grace and your mercy that has extended to us. We ask that you continue to forgive us of our sins, continue to cleanse us, change us, help us to be more like you, bless us, or to follow you, follow your example. I pray that your will will be done in the affairs of our city. We love you and we praise you tonight, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Budd.
Here.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones. Ray Coontz.
Here.
Mark Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the regular meeting held April 21st, 2014. Minutes of the Public Facilities Committee meeting held April 24th, 2014. Minutes of the Street and Sewer Committee meeting held April 24th, 2014. Minutes of the Municipal Band Committee meeting held April 29th, 2014. And minutes of the Emergency Services Committee meeting held May 1st, 2014. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Coontz, second by Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we have a new fireman we're going to square in tonight. Fireman Michael Joyner, I'd ask you to please stand up. And I'd ask the city clerk to please do the honors of the squaring in.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a firefighter according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have some library board trustees that we need to at least reappoint. I've got a motion here, I need to reappoint Nina Wonderlick and Marie Bard to the Library Board of Trustees. Can I have a motion from somebody?
So moved.
Alderman Coontz.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dortchiness. Discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, staying with the library board, one of our current trustees, Mike Repsher, is stepping down due to other concerns, basically spending some time with his young family, which I can understand. We do want to thank Mike for his service to the city. He served almost three years here. To replace him, I'd like to appoint Patrick Jeski to the Library Board of Trustees. I entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Voda, second by Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comment?
Comment.
Go ahead, comment.
I'd like to thank Mike Repsher as well, as being the Alderman on the library board. He's, the short time I've been on there, has done an outstanding job. I'd just like to thank him publicly.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the next resolution, I'd like to hold and do that during the Street and Sewer Committee minutes. And the next ordinance, we took care of that at the special city council meeting, so we shouldn't have to do that over again. So now we move the ordinance authorizing the city to enter into certain annexation agreements, these being the water annexation agreements, for the following properties: the Sala and Cheryl Assad property at Two Ladoo Court, the Dan and Twyla Helms property at 3421 Lincoln Trail, the Patrick and Brenda Young property at 717 Lakeside Drive, the Robert and Patricia Wells property at 2300 South Houston Street. I entertain a motion to approve that ordinance.
So moved.
Alderman Heatherling, give a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Burdell, discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor, you vote on this ordinance.
Okay.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, motion passes eight to zero. Okay, next we have an ordinance amending sub-paragraph A of section 8-4-9 of chapter four to title eight of the table of city code disregarding the water rate increases. I entertain a motion. Alderman Dortchiness.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Walters, discussion or comment?
If I can make a brief comment, Your Honor.
Please.
I've spoken with Mr. Spiegel, he actually brought this up, and he's absolutely correct. If you look at page five of the ordinance, first of all, these effects, these water rate increases will go into effect as of retroactive to May 1, with the exception of your contracts with Kincaid, Owonaco, and Langleyville. That, you need to go and look at your separate agreements and make sure we don't miss those windows of opportunity on those dates, and that's when these should go into effect, those rates.
Okay.
So we need to watch that.
Alderman Dortchiness.
Kincaid and Owonaco are by contract, and as is Langleyville, but Langleyville's a little bit different than Kincaid and Owonaco in the respect that we can change Langleyville's water rate at our discretion.
At any time?
Mm-hmm.
Then I would...
Those increases are, for Langleyville, are correct, that were in...
The minutes.
The minutes, right.
So what I would suggest then, that let's...
You can't predict Owonaco's, and you can't predict Kincaid's.
Right.
Because they're based on the cost of production.
Plus so many, so many percent or something, isn't it?
You can increase at a maximum of 10%.
But I think, can't you also, must arise on cost of production? Well then, why don't we, your motion should be adopt this ordinance with an amendment to paragraph D on page five that would make these rates applicable to Langleyville as of May 1, 2014 going forward.
Right.
Now, are they, are their staggered rates as well mirroring what the residential rates are? You know, there's an increase on May 1, 2014.
We already increased theirs for the next four years. Langleyville is in the, in the minutes. Langleyville's, we did, just like the residents of Taylerville.
So you've already made a motion on that?
Yes.
Then I don't think we need to change paragraph D, then. If you've already taken care of that, you've made those that go into effect by a council meeting motion, you did that?
Right.
Okay. As opposed to a committee level?
Yes, it went through the council.
Okay, then we leave it as is.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a motion to accept the Norfolk Southern Corporation proposal and proceed with the closing of East Adams, of the East Adams Street crossing.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Walters, give a second.
Second.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment?
Comment.
Alderman Burdell.
I apologize if this has been talked about since the first initial Street and Sewer Committee meeting, that we had a representative here from Norfolk and Southern, but I was opposed to that during that meeting, because I think that this is going to put some undue stress in that neighborhood on Adams Street, even though I know that intersection has given not only the city some trouble, but the residents some trouble, but I feel like, I've been down there several times to look at it. The gentleman that was here from Norfolk and Southern, he wasn't really that interested in talking about alternatives, this pretty much either closing or leaving it open, but if you go down there, there is a hole, basically, that amounts to about a five-by-five square that everybody that has had an issue with that intersection has fell off into. And it's really just a matter of putting some asphalt in there and maybe putting up a guard rail. And I know that this is a substantial amount of money that we're going to receive in order to close this, but I think it's going to put some stress on some of the other streets in that neighborhood, just for the mere fact that the railroad's not open to other suggestions. So I'm going to be go-to-know on this. I know it's in my ward, and I'm part of the minority, but I don't think this intersection necessarily needs to be closed because of some kind of danger. I think it just needs to be reworked and handled a little differently as far as when they, when they redo those crossings. I mean, they've, since I've been on the council, they've done that crossing twice, and both times they failed to do anything with this intersection, or with this hole that I'm talking about, and that's what everybody falls off into. So I think it can be fixed relatively easy, but like I said, I, you know, I don't know that they're that interested in suggestions. I think they're more interested in closing the crossing down.
Yeah, I could give you the specific reasons, but that has been brought to their attention several times over the years, and for whatever reason, they say they can't do it that way. I don't understand it either.
I think they can.
Alderman Dortchiness.
That, no matter what they did, where that hole is, when you're coming up, you cannot see that hole. So if it's a guard rail, if it's whatever you put in there, you're still going to, you're still going to go over there. If you're, if you're going to go in the ditch, as it is now, you're going to hit the guardrail if they put a guardrail up there. That's what's going to happen, because when you come up, I've driven it too, and you drive up, you can't, you just can't see there. And that's what happens to a lot of people, I think, that when they come up there, they swing over too far from time to time and run into that. And there's one company in town that has a record service, and they are against closing.
Yeah, they made good money off that, yeah.
And I agree with what Alderman Dortchiness says, but that's only if you're going from west to east. If you're going east, there's not a problem with the intersection. So not only are you solving that problem, but you're creating another one by not allowing traffic to go east to west, when I think that this hole and something else could be done to remedy the problem that the record company is making so much money off of.
Any other comments before we vote? Alderman Heatherling, and then Alderman Coontz.
And I believe because of this motion, there will be a public hearing scheduled?
I believe, yeah. I believe, I believe that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Coontz?
I know it's been said before, but basically, the railroad doesn't need our permission. They can close this thing whether they want to or not, so, you know, they're offering us some cash for it, but if everybody on this council votes no, guess what? They're still going to do it no matter what.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there's, there's some truth in what you're saying, yes. Alderman, vote.
Final comment, thank you, Your Honor. If I remember correctly, we have discussed this, and we've tried different issues and different attempts to keep people from making the left-hand turns, et cetera, signage, markings on the roads, and we still have people who are doing what they're basically not supposed to do. And this is basically the last, the last resort is to close that crossing for safety issues. And it's not because we haven't done our due diligence and tried to do things properly and make people aware of the security and safety issues there. It's the ignorance of some of the public who are making these turns against the directives of the, the signage.
Did you get that in the press? He's blaming the ignorant public. Not me.
I have a last comment. That's my ward, and I don't think anybody that lives in my ward is ignorant. And number two, other than the signage, we have not done a thing different to that intersection, not one thing. It's been striped and signed, and that's it. But the setup and the way they asphalt that intersection has been the same since I've lived in Taylerville.
All right, if there's no other comments, let's take a roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
No.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Okay, next we have a motion to waive the bidding process on the four memorial cannon bases at Oak Hill Cemetery and to approve the language changes to the contract with LaGrange Monument Works.
So moved.
Alderman Burdell, give a second.
Second.
Alderman Budd, discussion or comment?
Brief comment.
City Attorney.
I was the culprit that asked it to be put on the agenda, and you gentlemen already know this, but I want to remind you that, as I understood it, you initially bid this for the two stones, and they end up doing four. And there's a statute out there that if you increase the bid, the amount of the contract by 50% or more, you have to rebid the whole project or do what we're doing tonight and waive the bidding process. That's why it's on the agenda. The other language change was something that I think Mr. Newberry had, and the city clerk had discussions with the contractor, and they requested that changed for the warranty issue, so that's the reason why it's there.
Thank you. Any other questions?
But you already knew all that, so.
Roll call, please.
Ernie Dortchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Brings the city attorney updates.
Let me get to Mr. Basterius first, since he's anxious to make his trip back home, is that, at your, at your request, the contract for First Midstate Inc. and also the letter agreement with Chapman and Cutler, the bond counsel, was amended to provide that if the bonds, the principal amount of the bonds, would exceed $200,000, it appears it's going to be, that First Midstate Inc. will be actually paying the Chapman, Cutler attorney fees and expenses. Why I'm bringing this to your attention is really kind of a misnomers, because I want you to understand that while they pay it upfront, and David explained this a little bit more, is that it will be in, in the cost of the bonds, which means that eventually, when you pay back the, the bonds, you're, you're actually paying the attorney fees and costs yourself. It's just spread over a period of time, so that you understand that.
Okay.
And David, did I correctly state that?
That is correct. Basically, First Midstate buys the bonds from the city at face value. We resell the bonds into the marketplace above face value. That's what covers the expenses of the issuance, and that's reflective in your final interest rate, which you pay back. So that's how it's covered.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay, the other thing I wanted to bring you up to date on, on the, our ongoing discussion, I suppose, I haven't been much discussion recently, on the airport project with, with Mr. Laker, with Mr. Metzger. The Illinois EPA hearing that was scheduled for today has been reset at my request for August 4th at 10:00 a.m. I also placed a call to Mr. Metzger's attorney, spoke with him today, trying to get this off-dead center to see if, if with his assistance, we can get the parties back, at least start discussing this thing. So I'm going to send him, I don't think he saw the latest, the latest version of the agreement, I'm going to be emailing that to him tomorrow, we'll have a discussion, see if we at least get half the parties in a direction to kind of put this to bed if we can. Mr. Laker, I've not heard. I know you've got an outstanding interest demand pending. I've suggested, Mr. Voda, we hold off on that for a little bit. I think there's, some of the interest is being charged on funds that he's already gotten back, and should have been paid back on, on a loan, so we have that for discussion, but at this point, I just reserve it for a future discussion, if we will. Also, there's been emails that have gone out to Alderman Jones, to Alderman Burdell, and to the mayor, and I don't know if all of you have gotten a copy of the latest numbers on your ordinance violations, collections, issues. What I had thought initially was to go through these 10 boxes, I say 10, maybe, maybe even 11 now, of ordinance files that I inherited, that go way back for many, many years, and to see if we go through each one of those and see which one of those are collectible or not collectible, and turn them over to a collection agency. What I've, what I've come to the opinion now is, rather than take that time doing all that, continuing that, is to sit down with Alderman Burdell, Alderman Jones, and the collection people, and perhaps just go over this list with them and let them have a cutoff date, and it's not, it's not, I mean, go back, it goes back to 1982, if I'm not mistaken. It was like $138,000 of outstanding debts. Now, about 120 of that really is old, the other of it is pretty active or collecting money, so I don't think we want to touch those. They've had a fairly good success rate with the county. There's about a million bucks that is owed the county, and I'm being told by one of the, one of the folks that works for the agency that they've been able to collect about $90,000 to date, so that's about a 9%, 10% payback. So I would like to set up that meeting with Mr. Burdell, and we'll get this thing moving. Apparently, it takes some kind of a, supposedly by statute, I've got the say-so on it, but I would prefer that whatever we decide, we come back and I get your blessings, so that we move this forward, and we're all on the same page on that. The other thing is, the mayor, through a liquor control issue, I suppose we can say names here, the Roundtable was cited by the mayor for a liquor violation. We conducted kind of a mini-hearing. There was a, an agreed order that was entered, that the Roundtable was going to pay the city $750 and agreed to not sell liquor for a period of time. I think it was a week, wasn't it?
Right, seven days.
What happened, they, they paid the check, but the check bounced, and they're, they are not making the check good, and I understand that they've not come in to renew their liquor license, which would have been due May 1. So I think the next step is, I mean, we can't shut down the liquor, that's not going to do any good, and apparently they're not going to sell it anymore, for whatever reason, so with the mayor's direction, I'm going to be filing a small claims complaint to go after and try to collect the bad check that, that's outstanding. So that's an update on that. With that, I've been told you want to quit at 7:38, so I'm going to...
Any other, any other short response questions for the city attorney? Alderman Dortchiness?
Did they have gambling?
No, they do not.
Yeah, I don't think they have gambling, right.
No, they're not. Any other questions? Alderman Coontz?
What's our next move on, to find that property?
I gotta get moving on it, don't I? That's the one that's, we can't find the folks?
Exactly.
Right.
Right. Well, I guess, I did, I did talk to, I take that back, I did talk to, is Mr. Calvert behind me?
No, he's not.
I can say what I want to, but I did have a conversation with him, and, how can I say this? I can't instruct him to take it down, but if you want, if you really want me to go forward with it, it's going to be an expense in terms of filing a lawsuit and then having a publication notice of the other 10 owners and, and having a hearing. I think that's the one, I think your engineers already wrote a letter on.
Right.
All right.
And that's the right letter to write, but that letter, that doesn't allow us to go tear it down legally. We have to take that letter, file a lawsuit, and we can't find these other 10 people, so we do what we call an "in-rim," meaning that I can get jurisdiction over the property to get in and ask the court to allow us to tear it down, but our cost, I can't go after the people individually to get, to collect it, because we don't have in-personal jurisdiction, they call it. You know, I've actually notified you that I'm going to take your house away. So if that's the direction you want to go, the American Direct meeting will, will do that. Now, the legal expense is going to be, it's not, it's not minimal, and it does take time, and it's the same thing we did with Hotel Fresena years ago. It's a, it's a quite, it's quite a ordeal to go through one of these things.
Yeah, rough estimate, as far as what you're thinking might...
No, not off the top of my head, but I can...
...brand, or are we talking like...
Well, you're talking several grand, probably. Because it's not just, you have, you have more than one hearing, and, and then, then once you get the authority to go tear something down, then you have the right to put a lien on the property. So then you have to go back in like you would if you were a banker, and you didn't pay your mortgage on your property. I got a foreclosure now on that lien, and then you get the foreclosure time, and there's several hearings in that process, and then once you go through that, and then your lien is declared valid, and then you get a judicial deed, and then now you own the property, now you can go and try to sell a lot. So it's not just, you know, a 30-day situation. You're probably talking a year and a half, two years to go through that process. It hasn't made it easy for this type of scenario, but it's there.
My question is, let's, if, if that was one of those sinkholes that we see down in Florida, and we're, we're losing people into that hole, surely they let someone come up there and remedy that situation, regardless of...
Well, you would be, you would put barricades, you'd do what you can to save it, but you're not tearing it down. I mean, if you're talking, in Florida, the house is already on...
Sure, yeah, but you're, you're probably putting new dirt into there. They certainly don't have to go chase somebody down and say, hey, can we go ahead and fill up the hole? They understand it's a risk and a nuisance, and so they would remedy that. I can't believe that the city itself doesn't have some liability, knowing something like this exists. If, if one of my kids then go over and get hurt, I'm coming back to the city of Taylerville and saying, how long have you known about this house, and what have you done to protect my kids?
Well, keep in mind, it is private property, okay? It's not on a public way. And yes, you have an ordinance that gives you certain tools to take action to remedy the situation, but you also have a Tormenti Act that protects you, that, because if you had to enforce every ordinance on the books, you guys would be bankrupt within six months.
Sure.
It's just, you just can't dot the i and cross the t on every dilapidated property in town. You don't have the resources to do that. So, but, that's from the financial standpoint. You bring a good point from the human perspective, is that if it's unsafe, which is according to Green's letter, it is, you have to make the, the decision whether we pull the trigger and go after it. The other way is you do the tax route, and like we did with the other property, that's a two-year process.
Two-year, yeah.
Before you can get the property. That's a very simple, inexpensive tool that you can use, like you've done on one property, to get title to it, and you can tear it down, do what you want.
My question would be, it probably can't be as simple as I'm going to present it. With the letter from our city engineer and the colored pictures, couldn't that be taken and presented to one of the presiding judges in the courthouse in Christian County and say to that judge, this is a public nuisance, a safety issue, and have that judge be, with the ability and the authority to say, see if they will tear it down?
Well, you would think that would be the common sense way to do it, and I agree. But keep in mind, we're a non-home rule municipality. We only have authority by statute that the legislature decided we could, we could do. And that, we have a demolition condemnation statute. And that's the process that we must follow. So yes, you can file that action. You will, no doubt in my mind, get an order that will allow you to do what you want to do with it, but it's going to take a court action to do it.
Well, then my, my question is, can we get that letter and those pictures presented to one of the judges and see what, what, what direction he heads us in? All we're asking of the judges is, you look at this, we'll take you down there to the site, you walk around the issue and look at it. And it's a public nuisance, public safety, school's going to be getting out, kids are going to get hurt, and give us an order to tear it down?
I wish it was that simple, Mr. Voda. The pictures is wonderful, they, they say a thousand words. The letter is a great letter. It's actually definitive, it says it's in bad shape. That's the kind of information that I would put in the petition, in the complaint that we filed. With that information, the judge would say, okay, it is, go ahead and tear it down. But you got to file that action. And I have to notify, see, I, I have to notify the owners of that house in some way. If I don't know who they are, then that's what they call "in-rim." I, I have to file an affidavit, says we've searched, we can't find who they are. And we publish it in the paper. And we say, to whom it may concern, you've seen these ads all the time in the paper, that's what, that's what that's all about. Once you do that process and you file the requisite affidavit, then you have what they call jurisdiction to be able to deal with that property. I can't deal with you personally, because I can't find you. And that's what we'll have to do in this case. And we can do it, if you want to say, go ahead and go after it. Or do you want to sit back and wait the two years and try to get with the taxes?
I don't think we want to wait the two years.
Okay. Then we'll have to do something the other way. That's what you're, can't vote on that tonight, but I mean, if the mayor directs me, that's the direction he can come up and do something.
Alderman Dorchenaz, and then Alderman Heverly.
What about our new ordinance for abandoned buildings?
It incorporates that statute, if you look at it. Yet, it, it goes through the hoops, and then it picks up, by statute, that, what I'm talking about. And that's the powers that we have. They don't make life easy for smaller communities that are non-home rule.
I don't know what you just said.
Same answer as before, is what you said.
Well, yeah, but we, if, if we start imposing dollar penalties?
We can do that.
Okay.
But who's going to pay it?
So?
These, these, the one, the property we're talking about here, the one person, as I understand, from Mr. Calvert, would love to give it to us, doesn't know where the other 10 people are. And who do you send the notice to? And you're not going to be able to collect that fine.
Well, if, but the fine would, you know, day-to-day is a, each, is a separate offense, right?
Yes.
So it, it, I mean, pretty soon, you've got so many dollars wrapped up in fines.
Yes.
I'm not saying you would, you would ever collect it, but is, is, without jumping through all those other hoops, if you, you, we can't just address that?
If you?
Can we, can we address, you know, you owe us a million dollars, rather than, and whoever you send the, the notice to appear, you, you've only got the one person, right, that's been paying the taxes?
Okay, but, but when you assess a fine, I assess you for a $100 fine. I file a complaint against you and say, Judge, this, this person's in violation, I've proven it to you, now I want you to set a, a $100 fine. For the judge can do that, he has to have jurisdiction over you. He has to be able to say, yes, you have served Mr. Dorchenaz with a notice, warning him there's a fine coming if he doesn't, if he loses the case. Then that becomes a judgment. Then you can foreclose on that judgment. But the key in these kind of, in this particular case, who are you going to find? That's the practical problem.
Well, you find one person.
You could, you could find one person, but he apparently only owns one eleventh of the property. So that doesn't do you any good. You have an undivided one-eleventh interest in the property.
What if the one-eleventh of the house he owns is the only thing holding it up?
That's a very good point. I mean, it, it is, it's a real practical problem. It, it is. You have a remedy, but it's, it's, it's a longer process. If you look at what you just adopted tonight on pages seven and eight of that, it incorporates that, that statute, which is 1131-1, that's your demolition statute. That's what the statute, this is coming out of the statute. It says, okay, we can find you, you got to register your permit, you don't do it, then that gives us a right to, we want you to come up with a plan, you got to tell us what you're going to do. That works well if I've got, I got you in my, in my hand here, I got you in my class. I, I warned you about it, told you about it, you're around, and then I can find you and do things to you.
Okay, let's, let's move this forward. Alderman Heverly, you still have a question?
Yes.
As far as timelines, if, if we do it the expensive way, it's still going to be a year and a half to two years.
If you want to go to the step to foreclosing your lien, now, it's a kind of a two-step process. You go in, you get permission to tear it down and demolish it, clean it up. Your cost, if you file a document with the recorder's office within so many days, I think it's 60 after you get the work done, you have a lien on the property. You can sit tight on that lien and do nothing for a while. I think it's a two-year period, if I'm not mistaken. But if you go forward and want to foreclose on that lien, it's no different as if you were foreclosing on your home mortgage. And that is a year and a half to two-year process generally today. It's, it's so debtor-friendly, the, the new statute, it just, it's aggravating to go through one of those.
But it, it sounds like whichever course that we take, it's still going to be a year and a half or two years.
Not, it won't be a year and a half, two years to get the order to tear it down. It would be that long to, to go in and own the property so that you can get the lot and sell it, if that's what you want to do, to try and salvage some of your costs. If you don't care about that, and just let your lien sit, it's not going to take a year and a half, two years to get that court order.
So we can, we can get the court order to get it torn down?
And then you can just sit on your lien and see what happens?
Okay, okay. And, and a quick claim deed wouldn't help us here because?
A quick claim deed would help if we had all 11 people.
But since we only have one of the 11?
Correct. You're going to end up with an undivided one-eleventh interest.
And he has no control over that estate with the other 10 evidently?
And speaking with Mr. Calvert, I don't think, I don't even think he knows where the other 10 people are at. Now, I have to confirm that with George. And I thought there was a, a bank involved here with the mortgage that's probably would be willing to give it up. I mean, they would come at us, but you got that practical thing.
So we can get it torn down relatively short period of time, the long time is just getting?
Recover your cost. You won't, yeah, if you want to throw the money at it to get it down for safety reasons and not worried about trying to recoup it, that'll save you time and money.
Is it going to cost the same whether to bring it down now or bring it down in two years or so?
I don't know. I, that's not a question I would know the answer to, but you bring up a good point. But of course, the mayor's talking about the, the safety factor of it. If you read Mr. Green's letter, it's about ready to, you don't even want to breathe on it. I mean, from what I read in the letter, it's pretty bad.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you. The, the other 10 individuals who are partial property owner on this parcel, hasn't been an effort made to try to chase these people down? And the reason I'm asking that is, if they, let's say we, we pursue trying to chase these other 10 down, what would the court accept from us as a justified effort to try to contact these other names in the property ownership? And be able to take it to court and say, you know, we can't get them, you've done, you've done due diligence on this? And then they can take it from there and turn it over to us? I mean, is that a, is that a feasible?
That's an excellent, excellent question. And each, each case is decided on the facts. In this particular instance, it would certainly involve the one person. You'd have him probably sign an affidavit to us to say that he doesn't know who these people are. Find out who the, the people that died, go to that particular county, search and see whether any airship was, was filed. You'd have to, if you had any names, you'd have to check the phone book, you know, and credit bureau reports, things like that. Just say, we've checked all these avenues, got on the internet, plugged in these 10 people's names, nothing came up. Went into the military website and put her names in, nothing shows. You just clicked on down, and then you signed the affidavit, I can't find them, Judge. Judges are pretty reasonable about that. I mean, we'll have to spend a year doing that. I mean, it's just some reasonable effort. And I don't know where George is, how far he's gone with it, quite frankly, I just don't know.
Moving on, anything else, city attorney?
No, I don't think so. But you'll have to direct me if you want me to do something, I assume?
Okay, I mean, do you want me to direct you tonight, or do you want me to direct you tomorrow?
But I'm seeing a lot of hits, you know, not, so.
All right. All right, move on to mayor updates, and I don't have anything other than I want to ask the aldermen if you're available to attend Thursday's Lake Airport Committee meeting. I did have a representative from Ameren stop by today. They would like to discuss an easement out there across some lake property for a transmission line they're going to be putting in. And they will be coming to the meeting, even though they're not on the agenda, they're going to address it under any other matters, just to inform us on what they would like to do out there. So if you're interested, please try and show up at that meeting. Lee Alderman-Bud, had a comment you would like to make?
On the ward money, I have no problem with the ward money. There's $58,000 that's awarded to each ward. I have no problem with that. But I asked the other night to have an agenda item put on, we're going to spend somewhere around $40,000 for oil and chip in Ward 1. And I asked that we get prior approval before we do that expenditure, but was denied to have it on the agenda. And talking to the street superintendent at, at the street meeting the other night, we're going to oil and chip all the wards. And I feel that as being finance and that, that if we know we're going to spend 120, 25, or 150,000 in oil and chip in, in all the wards, that that should be pre-approved so when the bills come in, at least we've approved that expenditure. But that's not the, the correct process that has been, been, has been followed. And I didn't, I don't agree with that. And I just wanted to voice my opinion that I feel that if we know we're going to spend these dollars, we should do prior approval for those expenditures. That's all I have to say.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I've got. We can move on to committee reports. The discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part, the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. And we'll go to Street and Sewer Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Number of motions, gentlemen. The first motion I want to make is a motion of Alderman Dorchenaz. The second, Alderman Heverly, to recommend to the city council to approve the, the college club to hold the Hannah's Club, being a fundraiser at the corner of Webster and Main Call on September the 19th and 20th.
Okay, have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Voda, discussion or comment?
Just a, just a quick comment on this one and the next one, is, you're doing a special event permit, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't see it in the packet.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? The motion passes.
The second motion I'd like to make is to approve the request for Christian County employees to hold a community blood drive on Tuesday, June the 3rd, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay, have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Heverly, discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? The motion passes.
Motion to direct the city attorney to refer an ordinance for a four-way stop at the intersection of England and other streets.
Can you give a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Bud, discussion or comment? Hearing and roll call.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Ray Cuz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to close Cherokee Street from Gandy Street to Second Street, made in 26, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. for the Memorial Day services.
Second, Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment? Hearing and, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? The motion passes. Roll call.
Brief, brief comment, I've talked to Alderman Voda before the meeting, there's some blanks in that agreement that need filled out, I think, because the agreement apparently is 13% of the gross contract amount plus a hourly rate for the resident engineer work. This is the way the contract reads, there's just some blanks that need to put in that hourly rate, so I brought that to your attention.
I will be talking to the city engineer, Joe Green, tomorrow morning, and we get those issues out.
Okay. Just Alderman Bud?
I will be abstaining again, this is in front of my house.
Okay.
And so I will be abstaining.
This is going in front of your house?
This, overlay.
It's going in front of your house?
The overlay is correct.
In front of your house?
That's correct.
Just want to make sure I know where it's going.
Any other serious comments? Roll call, please.
Ray Cuz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Abstain.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor with one abstention.
And Your Honor, do you want to go back to the?
Yeah.
Resolution?
Back to the resolution. Okay, so we have a resolution, this is for the I.D.O., preliminary construction engineering services agreement for motor fuel tax funds between the city and Green and Bradford. This is for the Pawnee and Cherokee Street project. Alderman Walters, can you give a second?
Second.
Alderman Coons, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Abstain.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Ray Cuz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Ray Cuz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Ray Cuz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to Emergency Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was two motions in the Emergency Service Committee.